Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can I have attention please? We're about to start. So I'd like to just welcome you guys, everyone, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out this evening to our Town Hall meeting. It's really nice to see so many people that are attending, that they want to be interested in how this LID is going to work. I'm going to pass it over to our C A O. He'll be doing the presentation and explaining all of the intricacies of the proposal and answering any of your questions. So I'll call it Dave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. So for tonight's format, I'd like to, again, thank you everybody for coming this evening and coming to hear the information we have to present today. For today's format, what I'll do is I'll start with a presentation, provide everybody with sort of the same information, inform everybody about the project, about how it's structured and the process. And from there, after that, we'll open the floor to questions and ask people to take turns speaking to the podium there and presenting any questions, and we'll address them as we can. Just in an effort to provide everybody with the opportunity to have a chance to speak or have a question, I'd ask that each person limit their questions to a five-minute period of time, so that everybody has an opportunity to get to the podium tonight as well. If, for some reason, you don't get the questions, all the questions you have presented at the podium, there's going to be comment sheets as well at the back that people can fill out and present. You can provide your feedback, provide any questions, and we'll respond to you after the Town Hall as well. Furthermore, this Town Hall itself has been recorded, and it will be posted to the R M.'s website, as well as the presentation that I'm about to present as well will be posted to the website. So if people want to go back and take a look through some of the information, or listen to some of the answers, or share it with their neighbors, they're absolutely welcome to do so. So I invite you to do that. So with that, maybe we'll get underway. And again, thank you for coming on this rainy evening. It, I think it speaks well to the community to see this kind of commitment regardless of weather. So thank you. So tonight, we're here to discuss the West St. Paul Town Hall meeting regarding the wastewater servicing of Nye, Baldock, Evelyn, Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha streets and neighborhoods. So we'll be talking about the project itself, providing some background, and hopefully answering most of the questions you have. So to start with, a little bit of background. What is being proposed? What are we trying to do here? And really, what we're looking for is looking to install sewers on Nye, Baldock, Evelyn, Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha. And what this means is extending municipal sewer service to 114 properties in the area. The sewer service will be installed for each lot between the sewer main on the street and the property line of the individual houses. And a sewage pumping station is also being proposed for properties on Kennebec, Hiawatha, and the Minnehaha neighborhood. Why? Why are we doing this? Now, that's first and fundamental question here. There's got to be reasons, and good reasons, and there are. In 2009, the province of Manitoba established the Red River Corridor Designated Area. Within this area, which you can see on this map here, this is the Red River Corridor Designated Area, within that area, the replacement or modification of failing septic systems is now prohibited. So as your septic systems, as your tanks, as your existing sewer system fails, your ability to modify or replace it is now prohibited. So homes, what this means is homes with failing wastewater systems will be required by provincial regulation to install holding tanks if a wastewater sewer is not in place. So as time goes by, as these systems fail, which they inevitably do, there will be a requirement. There's no modification of them. There's, there's, you can't replace it if the system is not in place. So the municipality is making service available to residents now. We're talking about installing the service now so that tanks are not required as systems fail. The municipality has continued efforts to extend this municipal wastewater service to properties within the Red River Corridor Designated Area. And good progress has been made. You'll note that there are a number of wastewater or sewage lift stations that were legacy stations that have been abandoned or decommissioned and taken out of service over the recent years, as well the green area. The vast majority of the geography around the Red River Corridor Designated Area is now connected by sewer system as required by provincial regulation. There's a small number of areas that remain, and this project represents a step forward to continue that process and complete the connection in the neighborhood of Nye and Minnehaha. How do we do this? How do we take a septic system or a tank system and turn it into a municipal system? Well, a connection is typically made between the house connection, this is the house connection here, and the municipal service, which is located here. The municipality is responsible for the construction and maintenance and operation of the sewer system, the sewer system within the street, the right-of-way, draining down to the main street trunk and ultimately outside of the R M., and as well as a lift station, which is also required in one of the two subcatchments. From the property line to the house is the responsibility of the homeowner, the installation of that pipe as well. So normally, what happens is a sewer pipe is installed, a service connection is stubbed off at the property line, and a connection is made into the home at some point. What's the cost of this? Well, the project budget is approximately $6.16 million. Now, this is an estimate. This is the latest engineering estimate of the project. Ultimate final costing won't be established until tenders and bids are completed and construction is completed, but that is the estimate we have. All of that cost, the Manitoba Water Services Board will grant approximately 50% of the cost to a maximum of $3.6 million. A local improvement district will then be created to fund the municipal share of that cost. And the 114 properties that benefit from the installation of this sewer system will then be funding that municipal share. The beneficiaries will bear the cost of the installation. The municipality has, since the June meeting, the municipality has pursued other sources of grant funding to lessen the cost and the load to affected properties. And the municipality has had success doing that. Over $500,000 of additional funding has been secured from the Provincial Strategic Infrastructure Fund. Furthermore, $51,000 of interest has accrued on the provincial funding that has been advanced to this point. Manitoba Water Services Board did advance the $3.6 million ahead of time, and interest charges have been accruing. And that is of August 31st, 2023. That continues to accrue at a rate of approximately $12,000 a month and will continue to accrue until the fund is drawn down. So there is some additional cost savings in terms of refinement of design and the costing of the design. Further, design refinement has brought more certainty into the design, has brought some more clarity into the design, and with that, we're able to release what we call is contingency. And the contingency is funds that are available within a project for uncertainty or things that come up that you don't know. Well, now that we know more, we're further along with the design, we've got greater certainty in the design, and we're able to let out some of the contingency in the project and lower the expected cost of the project. We've got additional funding from other sources of government, and we've got some interest accrual. All of this has successfully brought down the expected cost of the project for residents. So when the cost of installing and emptying wastewater tanks is considered, when we look at the cost to replace a tank or septic field, when we look at the cost of operating and emptying the tank all the time continuously, sewer improvements themselves, over the long term, will provide a more cost-effective solution. So really, what this is about is this is about convenience. It's about long-term cost savings, and it's about environmentalism, as well as a regulated requirement from the province of Manitoba. So this is why we're doing what we're doing and why we're proposing what we're proposing. So for some cost comparison, just in case there's some skeptics in terms of the long-term cost of a private holding tank versus the installation of a sewer. Private holding tank after 10 years will have an average pump-out cost of, typically, depending on the frequency that one would pump out their holding tank. But hypothetically, if one pumps out their holding tank every three to four weeks, we would be looking at an annual cost of around just under $3,500. So this would give you a 10-year operating cost of just over $34,000. You'd also have a tank installation cost to replace that tank at some point of approximately $15,000, giving you a 10-year operating cost and capital cost of about $49,000 for a private holding tank. The capital cost for the Hiawatha, Minnehaha, Kennebec system is slightly different than, or is different than the capital cost of the Evelyn, Nye, Baldock system. And I'll get into the details of why that is later, but if you can accept for now that there are two different costs, I'll continue with this cost comparison. The average yearly sewer utility bill for people in both areas will be $788 or a 10-year operating cost on the sewer bill of just under $7,900 over the life of 10 years. The cost of the LID, the capital cost, a one-time investment per property on Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec is estimated at this point at $26,700. The cost of the same local improvement district is just short of $17,000, at $16,900 for people on Evelyn, Nye, and Baldock. So we take a look at some of the additional items that have to be included, which are the cost of the sewer connection, the cost of the city Winnipeg buy-in, the cost of a water meter for each of these. We find a total final capital cost of about $45,000 for the Hiawatha, Minnehaha, Kennebec system, and approximately $35,000 for Evelyn, Nye, and Baldock. So when we take the operating cost over 10 years and add it to the capital cost, after 10 years, your total cost in Evelyn, Nye, and Baldock would be in the area of $43,000. There's an estimate of $43,000, which is less than the cost of operating a holding tank. In Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec, your 10-year operating cost would be about $53,000, which isn't that far off of that of the holding tank. If we look at the 20-year cost, it's a bit of a slam dunk. The 20-year operating cost of a holding tank is over $83,000, almost $84,000, compared to $51,000 on Evelyn, Nye, and Baldock, and $60,000 on Hiawatha, Minnehaha, and Kennebec. Now, maybe I'm not in my home for 20 years. Maybe I'm not in my home for 10 years. But the value add to your property is there. The infrastructure, the investment is there and will be there for your property when it does come time to dispose of it however you decide. The point being, the long-term cost benefit of installation of the sewer system is there. A bit more background. When would this happen? When would all this happen? Well, the information package would be mailed out to residents in these local improvement areas next week for consideration at the public hearing, which is scheduled for November 2nd. Pending approval of the local improvement plan, construction could begin in early to mid-2024. Construction is anticipated to take several months to complete from there, with completion likely towards 2025 sometime, possibly late 2024, likely into 2025, and likely into the summer of 2025 for roadworks. As indicated, the project, the proposed project has two subcatchment areas. There's the Nye, Baldock, Evelyn subcatchment, the Kennebec, Hiawatha, and Minnehaha subcatchment. These subcatchments are different. Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn has approximately 54 properties. Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha, not approximately, it has 54 properties. Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha has 60 properties. Each subcatchment has different lengths of pipe, and the Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha system requires a sewage pumping station, where we need to move wastewater from a lower elevation to a higher elevation. How this works is on your local sewer line, sewage flows is collected from the houses along the street, drops into a manhole on Minnehaha, where there's a submersible pump in a manhole which pumps the wastewater into a pipe. This is now what's called a force main, a sewage force main, which is a pressurized pipe that pushes the sewage uphill under pressure and discharges into a manhole up a hill. The grade is too low to get it up high enough to drop into the main street trunk. It is then discharged into the manhole and then flows down to the main street trunk. This type of lift station is standard design, standard municipal design, best practice, most cost, or best operating practice, best way to go. It is required for this subcatchment. So there's two different subcatchments with different requirements, with different numbers of properties. So that's why they've been costed differently. Different costs, as I'd indicated, result in different costs to residents in each area. I had talked about this before. So of the approximate $6.16 million total capital cost, just under $3.8 or $3.797 million of it is estimated, and it is attributable to Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec. $2.36 million of it is attributable to Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn. Now, that's the total project cost. That's how the total project cost is attributed to each subcatchment. When we subtract the contribution from Manitoba Water Services Board, when we subtract the additional grant that the R M. is able to secure from the Provincial Strategic Infrastructure Fund of approximately $500,000, and when we subtract the interest accrued thus far to the end of August on the Manitoba Water Services Board funding of another $50,000-plus, the total cost to both neighborhoods or the ratepayer is just over $2.5 million. This is approximately a 60% discount over installing the infrastructure at cost. When you look at the grants, stacked grants, multiple grants, interest accrual, the work is getting done at about 60% of the cost, or, pardon me, a 60% discount, close to 40% of the cost that it would otherwise be. This is a bargain. So the estimated municipal share of the project, as I'd indicated, is $2.5 million. If we take, look at a financing over 20 years at a 7.75% interest rate, the annual contribution from each subcatchment is between $161,000 and $91,000 respectively. Please understand that these are conservative numbers. Prevailing interest rates are not 7.775%. The municipal's prevailing interest rate is approximately 5.775%. However, under the recommendation from municipal relations, they are suggesting that for the purposes of presentation, because there is uncertainty in the market, uncertainty in terms of interest rates, we should present numbers and calculations and provide for the potential escalation of interest rates of 2% between now and the time that the bylaw is finally signed off in what could be in the neighborhood of two years' time. So this is a conservative estimate. If the costing or the interest rates come in less than that, the annual cost to the ratepayer will be less than that, as well as if the costing on the tenders come in less than budgeted, the cost to the ratepayer will be less as well. There is uncertainty here. Rates could go up. Rates could exceed 7.775%. Tenders could come in high. Yes, there is uncertainty. But best estimates, and in fact, what we believe are conservative estimates are what we are presenting today. So what does this mean to individual rate players, individual homeowners? Essentially, there's two options, or there would be two options to homeowners. Option A would be a cash option, where the full cost per parcel is paid at completion. For Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha, the cost of that would be approximately $26,700 per parcel. For a one-time payment purchase, you've paid for the service. That's a one-time cost. That is option A. Option B is to finance that parcel over 20 years at the prevailing interest rate, which today is 7.775%. These calculations presume and factor in a safe interest rate of, or today's prevailing rate is 5.775%. These calculations factor in an interest rate of 7.775%. So with financing at 7.775%, which again is conservative, over the next 20 years, you would have an annual charge on your tax bill if you choose the financing option of $2,674 if construction costs come in as predicted. For Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn, the numbers for a cash option, a one-time payment, are $16,900, just sigh of $17,000. And the finance option is $1,693, or just under $1,700 per year, again amortized over 20 years. Actual charges will be finalized and levied upon completion of the project. So when the project is done, all the costs are in, the R M. goes to the bank, finances it, the prevailing interest rate then applies, and the actual costs are what are applied. Again, 50% covered by Manitoba Water Services Board and minus $512,000 from the additional grant and whatever interest has accrued over that time as well will be subtracted down. Again, this nets out to a construction cost of just over 40% of, or a cost to residents of just over 40% of the actual construction cost. Residents at that point, once these costs are tallied, once the prevailing interest rate is applied, residents will have an opportunity to come forward and declare whether they want to do the cash option or a finance option. They'll have 30 days to provide written notification to select the cash or finance option. If we don't hear from you, we presume that it's a finance option that's been selected, and there'll be an annual rate applied to your property tax for the next 20 years. So back in June, there was a presentation of costs. Again, as I'd earlier indicated, these costs were presented on the basis of early design, design that was, had a fair amount of uncertainty within it. These designs, the design has been refined. Some cost certainty is now, better cost certainty is now available, and we're able to provide for some release of contingency and some reduction of capital pricing. In addition, we have the $512,000 of additional grant money that can be applied and the $51,000 of interest that has been applied thus far. So the municipal share, or the share that would be borne by the ratebearers, in June was presented at a total cost of $3.6 million. Today's municipal share is reduced by almost $1.1 million to an amount of $2.5 million. Again, if we amortize that over 20 years, back in June, it was, an interest rate of 7.4% was used, and it came up with a finance amount of $3,447 versus today, which we're using a slightly higher interest rate, and we come up with an annual cost of $2,674. For a net reduction of $773.50 per year for people that choose the financing option, the cash option has been reduced from $35,000 per parcel. Again, I'm sorry, this is for Hiawatha, Minnehaha, and Kennebec. For a cash option, it's been reduced to $26,000, or savings of $8,700. For Evelyn, Nye, and Baldock, the per parcel cost has been reduced from $27,300 to $16,900, or a total reduction of over $10,000 per parcel. The per parcel finance option has been reduced for Evelyn, Nye, and Baldock from $2,659 to $1,693 per year, applied to the property tax. So good efforts have been made to find additional grant funding, to find additional financing available, and as well to refine the design to provide some more cost certainty. Knowing that, we are in a headwind. The longer this takes, the higher this goes, likely. At least, the prevailing trend has been such. May not, I don't know, but there is risk. So there is a potential headwind here. Maybe not, but there is risk there. There are other costs that we talked about, and you'll remember I talked about some of these additional costs when I did the cost comparison between the tank and the pump-out tank and the installation of the sewer system. Some of these other costs are the buy-in charge levied by the city of Winnipeg. Right now, the R M. has an agreement where residential properties currently have a one-time buy-in charge of $3,100. That is the 2023 charge. Every year, there is some escalation of that. By the time connection is made, your actual charge to buy-in will depend on the time you make the connection, whether you make the connection in 2025, when the sewer is available, or sometime after that. When you make the connection, you will pay the prevailing rate. Today, it's $3,100. This pays for the wastewater treatment capacity at the city of Winnipeg, and it's charged on the first utility bill after connecting to the wastewater system. So you'll get a surcharge of that amount. This price can be expected to increase over time. So if you connect in 2025, you can expect it to be lower than if in 2026, and so forth. There's also a sewer piping connection that has to be done. If you recall when we talked about how this is done, we talked about the connection is made between the sewer and the street. The sewer in the street to the property line is the municipality's responsibility, from the property line to the home is the responsibility of the homeowner. So there is a cost to install and cut over your sewer service to the sewer in the street. Installation of the sewer service on your property from the property line to your house, it must be completed by a licensed contractor. It is the homeowner's responsibility to do that. And the existing septic and holding tanks must be decommissioned at that time as well. Typical costs for that today are in the $10,000 to $15,000 range. So that would be an additional cost as well. That, like anything else, is subject to escalation as well. So we can expect the cost of that to be more in 2026 and more again in 2027, and so forth, unless there's very strange economic conditions. Other costs, finally, water meters. So a water meter is required to estimate the wastewater that is generated by a property and to provide the billing associated with that wastewater. The installation of the meters will be completed by the municipality, and residents will have a one-time charge of $367.58 to purchase the water meter at that time. If the water meter has already been installed in your home, you'll be charged that $367.58. The meter has not been purchased yet. If the meter has not been installed, you'll have to get it, pay for the cost of the installation as well. So there was a program to install the water meter So there was a program to install the water meters, I think, in 2014, and so that, that will be made available at. Okay. So, in 2014 or so, water meters were offered to residents, and a number of residents took advan, the majority of residents, took advantage of the opportunity and installed water meters at that time. There was no charge for those water meters then. There is going to be a charge for the water meter at time of hookup. That charge will be $367.58. If you didn't install the water meter at that time, maybe what I'll do is I'll, I'll move to questions after the presentation, if I may. So if you didn't install the water meter at that time, you will be responsible for the installation cost when the time comes, in addition to the cost of the $367. So this, this will be invoiced on the first water utility bill after connecting to the wastewater service. So after connecting to the wastewater service, it'll be connected to the first utility bill. And the water meters, just for some background information, are equipped with remote monitoring capabilities, so the, the RM can drive by and download the, the consumption without coming to your home through, through radio signal. So, to conclude, I'll just talk a little bit about the process itself, the local improvement plan process, and, and sort of how things would typically proceed through a, a local improvement. So according to the Municipal Act, the local improvement process can be initiated by a council or a petition. This has been initiated by the, the council a number of years ago, and the local improvement plan is then prepared, which it has been. We've gone through it now. And so the point we're at now is where a notice is then given to each potentially affected taxpayer. And I had indicated that, that those notices will be issued next week for the public hearing on November 2nd. If fewer than two-thirds of taxpayers object, council then gives the local improvement bylaw first reading, which means they give it first consideration, they read it, and decide whether to proceed or not. Council then submits the bylaw to the municipal finance officer, who will be, who is essentially a provincial employee in municipal relations, who then advance it to the bylaw package to the municipal board for consideration. If 25 or 10% of taxpayers have objected to this, to, to the, to the, the local improvement itself, the municipal board then holds a public hearing themselves for consideration. And then ultimately, the municipal board approves, amends, or rejects the bylaw. So that's the process to present a local improvement and to either approve it or ultimately have it fail. So, thank you for your patience, and thank you for letting me complete the presentation, and you have, make an effort to provide everybody with the same information and consistent information and clear information. And we now welcome people to ask any questions that they may have. I invite them to the podium to do so. And please, I'm going to request that everybody hold their questions to five minutes each. We want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to present tonight and has an opportunity to get to the, to the podium. So thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Doug Hilderman, 312 Nye Avenue. I'm not necessarily against the project. My beef is, I don't see why the municipality residents of these six streets should be penalized because of the municipality's poor planning. We've got sewer up and down Main Street, north and south of the street I'm on, Nye. Now you've got to amortize the cost over 54 or 60-odd houses. At the same time, the municipality, going back to 2018, to even just the current day, has got over 3,000 new houses paying property tax. So I don't know why the RM wouldn't be paying this LID portion instead of forcing it on residents of $40,000 to $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 when there's collecting another $8 million in property tax. I mean, this isn't, the RM isn't a for-profit corporation. I didn't vote to have Meadowlands, the Trails. I didn't want all these houses by Sonova Centre. I didn't vote for 4,000 new houses in my area, 40-foot lots, all this other mess that's been approved. I didn't want any of that, but it's here. But you are generating enormous amounts of property tax money and contributing virtually nothing to this $6 million plan. So if these councillors in these affected streets, I'd love to know if they're on side with this plan or not. Because to me, I mean, I'll put holding tank in myself. I have no issues. My field is, is fine. But you've got average residents here. I mean, I don't know, on my streets, I'd say the average age of a resident is probably 55 years old. So you're gonna, you're asking us to pay at 40-year-high interest rates, $40,000 to $50,000. Finance, finance all this stuff at high interest rates now and contribute nothing to the project as a municipality. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with the concept of sewer hookup. I'm not anti-sewer. But I don't think I should be penalized because of the poor planning of the RM running sewer north and south of these communities. Now you've got to hook us up at an exorbitant cost. I'm sure the sewer hookup cost in the Trails per house, I'd love to know how much that was. Or in Meadowlands, probably $1,500 bucks per property. And you want to hit me with $65,000, $70,000. So I think, I mean, RM should be contributing to this LID. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't know if I got two minutes left or not, but my, my, my point is, there's been a rapid expansion in the municipality. Whether you like it or not, it's here. The RM is bringing in a ton of cash, and the councillors and mayor should be paying this LID portion. That's, that's my opinion. I, I'd be hard, you have your, you'll have your turn. I think it's a matter of fairness above all else. I mean, I'm on Nye, I got, it's a small street. I used to live on Baldock, another small street. I know the cost of the sewer is high, but you're trying to amortize these bills over 60, 60-odd houses. It's nuts. And if you think people are going to sign up and vote these councillors back in when they're going to get a $26,000 upfront charge on their tax bill at 7.75%, these councillors got another thing coming. So, good luck with it.
So, so thank you for that. If, if I understand the question, the question is, is why, 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 why doesn't general revenue be applied to the local improvement? If I understand the question correctly, is that, is that fair? Yeah, okay. Well, to answer the question, in general, in, in local improvements, and this is standard practice in municipalities across Canada, probably across North America, when you do a local improvement, the idea is, is you come into an area and you make an improvement. That improvement provides uplift in terms of the value of the property and what the property is worth. And whether that is, whether that improvement is, you know, park improvements, or roadway improvements, or sewer improvements, or water improvements, or whatever the case may be, the community as a whole decides to invest, the, the neighborhood as a whole decides to invest in improvements for the neighborhood to make the neighborhood better. That provides benefit to the homeowners. It provides reduced costs, higher levels of service, and, and, and uplift in property values. So there's, the benefactors are the people, the people that actually win are the people that, that are in that local improvement district. So whenever you go out and buy service anywhere, it's the person, the person that benefits from the service that pays for the service. And that's why it, it, with local improvements, it's, it's not acceptable practice, or generally not acceptable practice, to burden the community as a whole with the benefits of, of, of a, of a, of a single area that is getting significant infrastructure investment and investment in the property. So I hope, I hope that explains why in a local improvement, funding, oh, it doesn't?
Baloney. You're baloney.
Well, I, I, I hope, I, I hope I tried to explain. What I'm trying to say, I'm sorry if I was unclear. What I'm trying to say is, is when the people that benefit from the investment, if the neighborhood chooses to proceed, if people, the people that benefit from the investment are the people that pay for the investment. And so that's the principle behind a local improvement. I'm sorry, maybe you could take a turn at the microphone, please? Yes, sir.
My name's Gary Galloway. I'm from 340 Minnehaha. This, your, the presentation, the only good news you had is it dropped from $7.2 million. The rest is a sham. The mayor asked for suggestions to be offered by, and answers would be given to our questions if we supplied the questions by October 3rd. Where are the answers, Mr. Mayor? I asked for a sheet to be printed of all the statistics as of September 30th for the total cash reserves, the number of dollars in the sewage reserve fund, which is about $3 million. None of that money is being used. You have the opportunity to take $1.5 million and make this affordable, maybe between $7,000 and $10,000. You're not willing to do that. You work for us. You work for us, and you're accountable. And I'm telling you now, this isn't going to fly. Stand up, Violet. Violet's got a petition. Anybody from Nye, Evelyn, and Baldock, I suggest you sign it. So it'll say canvassing. I have my own petition for Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec. If you haven't signed, I suggest. What are your comments, Mr. Mayor? Why haven't you done what you promised that you would do at this hearing? This hearing is a sham. I send you a, a, a letter requesting that the hearing date be on a Saturday to make it available to seniors in the daytime. You've already made the decision. You don't care what we say.
So, sir, if, if, if I could, if I could just ask that we keep it professional, please?
I am being professional. Why isn't the mayor being professional? You've already decided on the hearing date, on a Thursday.
I'll speak to that. We decided to keep it on the days that we have because typically that's when we have those meetings, is on a Thursday. If we would have had it on a Saturday, we would have we would have inconvenienced other residents in this area. Because they plan for their kids to go out for hockey's or for other events. So either way, we were going to inconvenience anyone, which is why we have taken the, the effort to make sure that everything is being recorded this evening. Excuse me, that, why we have recorded everything this evening, so those people that are not able to attend can listen to what is being said and the questions that are being asked. As far as the questions that are being asked, I believe that people left their questions this evening, if I'm right. If I can speak to.
You haven't answered the questions that were submitted, submitted to you by October 3rd. And as far as your excuse of having it on a Thursday because of hockey, take a look. 30% of them, of the 114 are seniors, 70 and 80 years old. They have no kids going to hockey. I asked you to have it on a Saturday in daytime hours so that you, you would think that you would care about the seniors, that they wouldn't put themselves at risk. But obviously, you don't care. There's no reason whatsoever that the municipality can't take $1.5 million out of that $3 million sewer fund towards this project and make it affordable. The Main Street project cost $5,740. Now you're talking people to expect to pay $26,000? Are you out of your mind? How long have you lived in this, held residence in West St. Paul for, Mr. Mayor?
I don't find that to be a relevant question.
No, it is a relevant question. How long have you been a resident of West St. Paul?
Sir, I, I think we should probably keep this to the content of the presentation.
Well, I, I, I'm asking a legitimate question. I've been a resident of 43 years. How many of you have been, lived here for 30 years or more? How many for 20 years?
Okay, well, I, I, if, if I understand your question, I think you have, I think I heard two questions. The first is, why can't we accommodate a Saturday, which is your preferred day? And the second question is, why can't we apply funds, general revenue or reserve funds to the local improvement district? If I understand your two questions.
Especially the sewer reserve fund, which has $3 million in it. And that's designated for sewer.
So, so to answer the first question, it's very difficult to find a day to accommodate everybody. And so I'm, I'm unfortunate, it's unfortunate that Saturday isn't your first choice, or pardon me, Thursday isn't your first choice, November 2nd. But the, the, we have to schedule a date. We have to schedule a date and get advertisements out and notices out, and a date has been selected. So for the, for the second question, I think I answered the second question as part of the first question, which was, why isn't general revenue applied to local improvement districts?
I didn't say general revenue. I said the sewer reserve fund.
I understand, and, and the principle is the same. The sewer reserve fund is funds that are collected and held within reserve for the, for the collective benefit of the municipality. It is a general fund to fund facilities pertaining to the municipality as a whole, improvements to the municipality as a whole. To, to apply that.
The fund has been in existence for eight years. How much of that has been spent in eight years out of the sewer reserve fund? That's one question I asked. Can you give me an answer to that question?
The answer is, is the funds in the sewer reserve.
I want an answer to my question. I said that sewer reserve fund has been there for eight years come this November. How much money in the past eight years has been withdrawn from that fund?
So, what I'll, what I'll do is, I'll try to answer your question, if, if you'd let me. And then I think the five minutes is up.
Hear that? He doesn't want to answer the question.
I'll, I'll try to answer the end question, if you'll let me.
I handed the question to the mayor on October 2nd. He doesn't want to, they don't want to answer the question.
Mr. Galloway, you're out of order.
Yeah, I'm finished.
Like, you'll have to let him answer.
Okay, so if I can, if, if people would like to hear me answer the question, I'll try to do so. Okay, thank you. And, and again, I would, I would ask everybody to try to keep this respectful and professional. Because the only way we're going to get anything out of this is if we're all able to talk. If we're yelling, and if we're being rude, and if we're being accusatory, this will be very unproductive. And people will come away with a lot less information to make up their minds. So I would appreciate professional conduct as much as possible. So, to answer the question, the, the reserve funds themselves are funded by the community at large. Those funds are applied to projects that help the community at large. In a local improvement project, the local improvements are generally funded by the beneficiaries of that project. When a, when a sewer is installed in a neighborhood, it provides benefit to that neighborhood. It provides improved service levels. It provides uplift in property values. It provides environmental benefits. There's benefits to be had, and costs. It's more cost-effective in the long run. So by, by financing local improvements through general revenues or through reserves, that's not appropriate practice. That's not appropriate accounting. That's not appropriate municipal practice. The beneficiaries of a local improvement pay for local improvements. And that's how it is in West St. Paul, and that's how it is in municipalities across Canada. So I, I hope that answers the question. So I hope that answers the question.
So, I have a follow-up, this is your history to my point, so I'm going to need a quick call. The logic is false. You're saying the beneficiaries are going to pay the cost. With the 4,000 homes damage our municipal infrastructure, who pays for that? We all do. You don't charge some of the metal lines because they beat up the grassman. You visit on them or other street, we all pay for the damage to the infrastructure as a result of all of the broke, we don't build somebody in metal lines because they were 2% of the damage.
No, that's correct.
We all pay.
And so, that's right, and...
Okay, so now, the logic now is because supposedly I'm benefiting somehow from the sewer, I'm paying the full cost. All the people up in our river basin are supposedly benefiting because they don't see vision of the river.
Okay. I, I understand the question, sir.
If the logic you're using is different, is because they're not analyzing cost for the municipal expansion to the new houses specifically, we're all paying for it.
Okay, I can, I can, I can try to answer your question, sir.
Well, I don't know if you're answering, I mean, I'm a business person coming out of this, I don't need to be lying to you.
I, I'm asking to keep this respectful, sir.
I don't want to...
Nine yards, it's a two-way street.
I don't want to...
So, so to be clear, the improvements on the, or the repairs and the maintenance on the roadways that you speak of are operating repairs. The repairs that take place in a community to maintain a community in a certain condition to maintain the upkeep of a community. That is funded out of general revenue. That, that is a general operating cost. What we're talking about today is a local improvement, which improves the quality in the neighborhood, where there's a higher standard of service being attributed to that neighborhood. And that is why it is costed to the beneficiary. Please, please proceed.
Okay, I'd like everybody to please...
Feel free to step to the podium, sir.
I'd like everybody to take a pen out or cell phone, a phone, to take my phone number down in case I don't get a chance to finish. I have a petition, and if we don't get a chance to sign it, I'd like you to text me to come over and sign it if you're interested. I'm going to read the petition out, but I'll give you my phone number. First of all, my name is Violet DeSaint, like a flower and a saint. And I live at 326 Hiawatha Avenue. My phone number, you guys ready? Now, remember, this is all our money. We elected these people to represent us. How do you think they're doing so far? Are you happy? Anyhow, okay, so hopefully, I've got, I've got the, I've got the reserve funds, I've got printout here, but anyhow, I'd like you to read the petition because I may not get through it.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, is there a question?
I'm handling this my way, I don't have a question. I am reading the petition that by law we're allowed to do, so I'm going ahead and reading it, because it's probably important for everybody to hear what the problem is going on. Okay. So is it, I hope I got this right, bylaw 2023-11, I've also given 2023-07, so. The 114 homeowners on the streets as listed in the bylaw, and the local improvement district are opposing, rejecting bylaw 2023-11 installation of any sewage on said streets and to their homes at this time due to the high costs. And until such times that the prices come down to more affordable values between ranges of $5,000 to $10,000 per household or within that range, we propose meeting in two to three years to review this matter once again, or if the above price ranges we request can be met earlier. Total cost of entire sewage project as specified at June 2023 meeting for 114 homes was 7,200, 7.200,000, well whatever, 7,200,000 minus 50% government grant at 3.6 million. Now take in mind, we can keep doing petitions every time, they're trying to say, oh, well, you know, maybe we won't get this grant later, well then we'll do another petition. Anyways, we divide this per 114 per household, and that equals about 31,000 per household, and like we went through, like who can afford this? And at our age, that's over three times more than we want to pay. Since the cost five years ago when the sewage was supposedly, was to be installed was $5,000 to $10,000, then, and that's when they should have done the sewage install. Anyone who gave this some thought then knows that the economy goes up in price, not the other way, very poor planning on their part. So here we are, five years later, with skyrocketing prices no one can afford. Even with the 50% grant in place, it's still far too expensive for a pipe hookup to a sewage plant and to each home. They're only digging a few ditches, adding pipes, and a pump to pull water up on a few streets for Christ's sake. The entire project is very much overpriced, like most things these days. When West St. Paul Municipal Board of Directors CFO accumulates adequate tax dollars in the Emergency Contingency Reserve Fund, CRF, from 2 million, said to be in there now in the last West St. Paul meeting I attended, and wait until that value increases to 2.5 million, we can move forward using the entire amount of our accumulated tax dollars to fund this project with the 50% grant and proceed, proceed. Leaving a remaining expense of 1.5 million to 114 homeowners paying an out-of-pocket expense equaling about $13,000 per household hookup from street to house, providing the municipality locks in the cost of 7.2 million and the 50% grant, and don't change the numbers, we can wait until then. If we do this project now with the municipality calculation of 31,000 plus dollars per homeowner, then most homeowners would have to get a loan at a time when interest rates have never been higher. The Bank of Canada's fluctuating interest rate is between 5% to 7% plus. And who knows if the bank will provide many loans now? Anyways, people who can afford to pay for a loan are being rejected at the bank even nowadays. World economists are saying the world is on the verge of the largest economic collapse known to mankind. The fiat dollar is losing value exponentially, is not backed by gold since 1966, so it's literally worthless, worth only the cost of the paper it's printed on. This allowed shysters to print billions of phony money and circulated as if it were worth something, which is the reason we are in this world financial mess. The fiat dollar was only worth something when it was backed by gold. This is why economists are urging everyone worldwide to use 25% of their earnings from each paycheck to buy gold and silver. When the economy collapses, that will be the only acceptable commodity. We are very close to this happening now. So it's wise as to hold on to all our panties and convert it to gold and silver. Lucky we live in Winnipeg, the city has a boutique store you can buy there. This is the reason why banks are extremely hesitant to lend out money now to anyone, even those who can afford a loan.
The cost of new housing has increased by 30%, most cannot afford them because of extreme high rate of unemployment. And the cost of living has increased exponentially as well. Chinese chipmunks have had to cut their houses sales to survive. Currently, they have 60 million Canadian houses in the world.
Could, could I? Could I, could I have a next question, please?
...bankruptcy. So I can give you websites that will force you to...
Okay, please, please, please take the podium.
Over 40,000 banks were destroyed in the USA, were burned down, and dropped 200 US banks and thousands of banks. The world is falling too. Same thing happened to...
They're waiting for their time to fall already. Only minutes of overtime.
We've got a lot of time, everyone. We've got my folks everywhere, if you're interested, sign the petition. Okay, fine, whatever.
Norma Alberg, 312 Evelyn Avenue. And I'd like to thank you for the work that you've put in so far on this, but I think that we can do much better.
She needs to talk into the mic.
I think that we can do much better on these numbers, and I certainly am one who is aware of best practice, standard practice, but it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate all options for us. So as we look at how municipalities will use LIDs, I think that we have perfect examples here in West St. Paul, where decisions are made by council. They are allowed to look at available monies, for example, a gas tax reserve, and they decide which roads are done, which infrastructure projects are taken from the gas tax reserve. And that does include wastewater and water projects can be taken from those reserves. As an example, this year we had one road paved magalas for a cul-de-sac road that has 34 properties, but there was no LID done for that. It was just taken from the reserve funds. So the council does have the ability to look at various options, and I believe that this is certainly one that they need to continue to look at. For example, as has been mentioned here, there is almost, probably now there is $3 million in the sewer reserve. There has been, according to the audited statements, there have been three years when 165,000, a magic number, I'm not sure why, the same number every year, has been taken in three years from the reserve. But in those years, there were not reserve or sewer projects done, yet money was used from the sewer reserve. So I'm not sure what that money has been used for. But I have another option I'd like to put forward here, continue number one, to get the numbers down further. And then, number two, the RM is not a for-profit business. And so if we have all of this money in the reserves, if somebody is unable to put the one-time payment upfront, there isn't a need for the RM to go and get the loan from a banking institution at that interest. I put forward another option, that the money that the ratepayers need to contribute can be borrowed from that reserve, and when our LID money comes in over the 20 years, that it goes straight, no interest, back into the reserve. That's another option. Sorry, I guess that wasn't the question.
Yeah, no, thank you for your comments.
We have $10 million remaining in the reserve right now. That leaves 271,740 for dollars and 67 cents in towards it.
This has become, unfortunately, a... Do I need to introduce myself? I'm Dave Turney, I live on Kennebec Street, born and bred, proud to brag about growing up in this neighborhood. I went to school in West Calhoun, and everybody was envious of us, even though we were all called farmers when we first went to school there. But I'm not going to get sidetracked by that. When I first walked in here, I sat and talked to Giorgio and Dave, and said the tenor of this whole issue is not a bunch of people living and working together in the community that I grew up in. I bet you can think of 10,000 places you'd rather be right now, Dave, and it shows all over you, so that's not what we're here about. But we're not going about this the right way, we never have from the get-go. If there's an option like this lady just mentioned, well, it shouldn't be some piece of information that somebody has to pry out of the archives of our community, because this is where, we love this community. We brag about it all the time. Most of us folks, and none of us, I don't see any, there's a couple of 25-year-olds here, but most people here are close to my age, and they've all either bought a house here, raised their kids here, or myself, they moved back, and this is their dream. And I've watched this from before it even got started, and the, the planning of it, the way it was implemented and all this, it always seemed like it was stumble bumping from one pillar to post. Like, we wasted half an hour tonight, whether you're supposed to do that or not, of a presentation that we've heard umpteen dozen times. Pete, when you came and knocked on my door and asked for my vote, I saw a guy that I looked at, and I could trust and respect and have him come to work for me. Now, maybe you don't like Gary or his presentation and none of that, but there's a question that's been asked that we're not getting answered. And either you don't have the information, or if you're reluctant to answer it, at least tell us why. Because every dime that's spent in this municipality is our money. It's not the Bank of West St. Paul. And one, and I'd like to ask another option, is that the proposal that, that, I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't remember her name? Yeah, no. Is, is the municipality not able to put this in a better presentation to everybody from an interest rate standpoint? Do they not have access to some better deals on money? If it comes to that? Like, let's start looking at this like some, hey, my buddy's stuck in the ditch, it's January, we need to help him get out of there. Not like, ha, ha, look at you. It, it, it's just ridiculous. I'm not saying that we're not angering, expressing our anger, but how did you expect human beings to react when they're put in this situation after interest rates aren't as high? I know, I remember 18% mortgage rates, and having 11%, and how lucky we were. But we're not at the best of times financially, we've just come through a pandemic. Times have been tough for everybody. Let's all start pulling this wagon together, not having a tug of war. And do everything you can, and answer all the questions, and then there'll be more trust and more cooperation, and we'll all get to where we need to get to. Everybody wants to be able to flush their toilet and know it's either not going into the neighbor's yard or the river. By the way, the city of Winnipeg hit a new record for flushing crap into the river over the last rainfall. Let's give them a round of applause. And if your name is Wardrop, you and company have had a lot of work trying to keep the city from doing that, right? So, I hope that my words take the edge off of this, but we need to, you know, everybody do the right thing. You guys have relented to serve us, Giorgio and maybe Pete, not right now, but somewhere down the road, there's Gwynn and Carol across you. I know you guys all got raises, and I hope you're saving that money to pay for your sewage, but, well, whatever it was, I know they weren't getting paid better all to start off with, but that's, that's it. Hold on, this is my dime, just a loan. Anyways, that's all I have to say.
We don't need...
I have to... I have to... I have to...
Hello? Is this on?
I'm just going to take a little bit of a different approach, I'm just going to, I wanted to say thank you to you guys for lowering those costs. That was nice to see. I do think, I do think Gary's emails triggered that, I don't think if Gary had sent out those emails, I don't think that would have happened for us, so thank you to you too, Gary. And I do, I guess my question is, are you guys still looking at different avenues to get funding from the province, or feds, or the municipality? I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think there's part of that question and, and the previous question sort of a little bit blended. The short answer is yes, absolutely. I mean, any opportunity for additional funding, for additional grants, additional support, we will pursue and apply as we can. So all efforts are being made to continue to lower the price of the project. That, that includes design, perhaps we'll see more favorable interest rates than, than the assumed case, the assumed case, as I'd indicated, is at 7.775%, which is 2% higher than the prevailing rate. So we, we will hopefully have more favorable interest conditions than that, we have more favorable interest conditions than that today. So hopefully we'll see some, some, some benefit on that in terms of the costing. Hopefully we'll be able to get some competitive prices on, on the tenders itself, where we'll be looking for innovative approaches with the contractors and, and with our, with our engineers. In fairness, the costing has come down in the order of a million dollars, and that's a million dollars to the ratepayer, right? So that's substantive, and efforts will continue.
The original proposal was overpriced. That's why it's cut down. And why isn't the...
I'm sorry, sir.
...the MP here, he's responsible for federal, can't use federal money. I've suggested, and it's in my position, that I understand the federal government does not subsidize sewer projects, but why can't they give us an interest-free loan over ten or twenty years?
Yeah, I'm not able to answer that question, sir.
Why is it... ...in RAC here? I talk to you on camera today.
Okay, so maybe we'll... Sir, we've had five minutes to ask questions, I'm sorry. Next question, please.
Yes, my name is Ken Smersky, I live on Nye Avenue. Hi, Dave.
Hi.
We got this information sheet put out to us prior to... We got this information sheet put out to us prior, back in July, and we were supposed to have a meeting July twenty, which was postponed until now because of, get some feedback or whatever. But in here, it says here, requirements to connect to new wastewater collection system. If wastewater collection system is installed in an area not previously serviced by a wastewater collection system, an owner of land in that area must connect his or her wastewater sources to the wastewater collection system and take any onsite wastewater management system, decommission it, fine. The past, before the earlier of, the passing of ten years from the day that the wastewater collection system was installed, or the transfer or subdivision of the land. Now, what do they mean by the transfer of the land? Does that mean before I sell my house, I have to put this in?
I don't believe that's the case. I don't think that's the case. Maybe, can, if you could read that again, please?
It says here, requirement to connect to wastewater collection system. And then it says, you know, it says here, connect his or her wastewater sources to the wastewater collection system and take any onsite wastewater management system, decommission it, which makes sense. And then it says, before the earlier of, the passing of ten years from the day that the wastewater collection system was installed. And then it said, D, the transfer or subdivision of the land. I don't understand what they mean by the transfer.
Yeah, that doesn't sound right. Maybe I can ask Laney if she can clarify that for you?
Yes, thank you. The regulation that you're referring to does require a connection to the system within ten years, and there are subpoints to that. As you mentioned, if the property is transferred, so if you sell your property, it's required to be connected, but it can be, it's within two years of the transfer of the land. So you yourself would not have to connect the property, the new owner would have to connect within two years of the transfer.
How come it doesn't say that? How come it doesn't spell that out here? It just says, but transfer, doesn't say anything for two years. This is the information panel that you can send back until... Sounds to me like I can't sell my house until I look at it.
I'm glad you brought that up, because if that was unclear, then it's good that we've clarified, and certainly we can add information in the package that goes out next week so that it's very clear. It's not at the time of sale for you.
Thanks for raising that, Ken.
Are you ready? Let me start with thirteen years. My questions are pretty simple. Oh, Gary Allen, double R, I'm on Kennebec. The Seltzer Planning Board demanded that I put in a septic system even before the municipality had a plan, and that was thirteen years ago. So that cost me thirteen thousand dollars, or twelve thousand dollars. And as I understand it, there are still homes, eleven homes, on Minnehaha that are still dumping in the river. So I'm wondering if I could get compensated for that. I was told more development would reduce my taxes. My taxes have gone up ten times since I moved in here, not ten percent, but ten times. Wouldn't the development west of us, can't they contribute to our costs, in part at least? I mean, they wouldn't be, you wouldn't be charging them something like seventy thousand dollars for a system that comes with their house. So here's a simple question. Why would the water meter be free five years ago, or whatever the number was, and now we have to pay for it? That doesn't make any sense. You're wanting us to be polite. We're not just angry, we're scared. This is our homes that you're talking about, and you're very cavalier about it, and Peter sitting there smirking and not being very respectful nor professional, I think is kind of inappropriate. The Red River is a federal waterway. I would think that they have to, at least in part, contribute to the costs. You're expecting a hundred and fourteen people in this small community of geriatrics and young people with young children to come up with seventy thousand dollars? I mean, really?
So I just, I'm not clear where the seventy thousand dollar number came from.
Well, why everybody's adding twenty years? What is going to happen?
Oh-oh.
I'm not going to be alive until I calculate, or I'll tell you exactly.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. So you're saying if you add up all the payments with interest, it'd be that order?
Also, there's just my wife and myself, and, you know, we may pee four times a day. There's no way that I have to empty my tank every three to four weeks. No, no, you know, the septic tank, we get that holdout, you know, every couple of months for, what is it, a hundred and sixty bucks? That doesn't come up to sixty thousand dollars. Oh, I can pee at Gary's place for free.
Okay.
So, sorry. Could I stay until you answer the question?
To be clear on the question, I think you're asking, why couldn't other portions of the municipality contribute toward the LID?
Well, there was four or five questions there. They were pretty straightforward, I think.
Okay. So that was the first. I think we've answered that one previously.
Okay, well, okay, so Minnehaha has been still dumping for the last thirteen years. Do I get compensated for my twelve thousand dollars?
There's no provision to compensate for your investment.
Well, why did I even go along with it, then? They continued to dump in the river.
Yeah, if you're required to install a septic field and septic tank...
If I'm required, why weren't they? Why weren't you?
If you're required by Manitoba, or the Manitoba government, to install a septic field and a septic tank...
But you were too. We're in the same neighborhood, or in the same, you're a street over from me.
No, I'm not, sir.
Well, where are you? Aren't you on Minnehaha? Well, it doesn't matter where you are.
No.
The people in Minnehaha continue to dump. Why couldn't I continue to dump? And philosophically, I'm not opposed to this, but there's a discrepancy here, from one neighborhood to the next. You know, they ended up nailing six or seven houses on...
Unfortunately, I'm not able to respond to sort of the decisions by Manitoba Environment, the regulator. If they had required you to install a septic field and tank thirteen years ago, there must have been reasons.
But they wouldn't come to my house and say, you need to do this. It's the catchment area, these three streets that you're talking about. But Minnehaha didn't agree, didn't go along with it. But all of the people in Kennebec did. It's like, it's just unfair. But anyway, that's, I know you don't have an answer to that.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it was a municipal decision at the time either.
Well, they, anyway. So the development was to reduce our taxes, so why aren't all of these houses west of us contributing to the overall development of the city, rather than having a hundred and fourteen people, homes, pay for this, in total, completely?
Yeah, the reason for that is, is with a local improvement district, the beneficiaries typically pay for, generally pay for improvements in the area that are being applied to them because...
So do my taxes contribute to a park that goes in an area that's in a new area?
Typically, those are paid for under the development agreement by the developer.
So all of those taxes that were, that I was told would help our situation in terms of taxes are not right. Hasn't helped me at all. Certainly hasn't helped us with this sewer situation.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Well, what, no answer?
I'm sorry, what is the question?
Well, why don't all of these taxes spread out everywhere?
Because a local improvement typically is funded by the benefactors of the area of the local improvement.
What? Anyway, I'm repeating that question, so... And I'm not impressed with Peter sitting and smirking and saying nothing while you're asking us to be polite when our homes are at stake here.
Yes, sir.
I think you're talking about a capital project versus a local development project, right? I sort of agree that this project has been instituted by the government, the project in the province of Manitoba, and it's being forced upon us, which will put it into a capital project scenario. Local improvement is when it's a project that's asked by the developer, by the residents. I can see anyone asking for this project, but that's not why I'm here. I'm talking about the design. Can we bring up the overall site?
Sure, I'll move through the slides and maybe let me know when I have the one you want.
Just a map.
This one? No, keep going.
Yeah.
This one, okay.
Yeah. See here, this is the second open house presentation map. The first one showed the lift station where it is at the end of Kennebec, and they had a horse main running up west to connect to the trunk sewer on Main Street.
Like that?
It's now gone, which is good, because the first one, there was still property available there to run an easement, and I asked Dave why the lift station was still there, and it shows an easement going towards the river. But that easement is for land drainage, it's not for sewer. There's not enough room in there to put the lift station. So with this new plan showing the lift station as present location, it's in the wrong location. The right location should be at the corner of Kennebec and Hiawatha, which would now be the low point for all the sewer lines. Thus, getting rid of that horse main from the south lake of Kennebec would reduce the overall cost. So my question is, will this lift station be relocated to its proper location? There's a park on that corner, and the, what is it, the east, northeast corner of that park is not being used for anything, it's just a grassed area. There's actually services there in the present, right now. Again, that will be a further cost reduction. So my question is, will that lift station be relocated?
Okay, thank you for the question. Maybe what I'll do is I'll defer that to Stan Tech Consulting, the design engineer for the project, and maybe they'll be able to answer the question around the siting of the lift station for you, if that's fair.
So you're right, there are two potential locations for the lift station. One is where it's at right now, and one is the park area. So the area that you're talking about, it might have some drainage going through it, but we have allowed a culvert, so the drainage is not going to be adversely affected in there. So the municipality's direction is that we would put it where it is shown on the plan there right now. If you put it in the park, you're going to be taking up a substantial area of what's meant to be green space versus a space that's not used for anything right now.
The lift station, where is it? Lift station, lift station footprint's pretty small. I can't see it taking up a lot of water. Miss, all your drainage is in that.
The lift station itself is, but the site has to be built up to the flood protection level, so the site itself, I think, is in the order of like fifteen meters by fifteen meters. And so with the grading on that, if you put that in the park, you're going to be losing a substantial area there versus just the manhole itself.
You know, what's happening now is that there's a waste of horse main from Hiawatha to Kennebec, going to be turned around and go back up Kennebec again, and then the Hiawatha is...
You're right, there is a section...
That definitely has to be used. My second question.
If I may, did you have another comment or...
I was just going to say, you're right, the force main would be shorter if the lift station were to be located at the park, but we also would need another manhole for it to go in that location to get it into the park. So the cost savings would not be all that significant in that case, so I think...
I've been an agent for forty years, I told you this, I worked in the U.S. Second question, is, if you could bring up the tanks again in the man...
Let me see if I get the right one here.
Oh. Oh, there we are, sorry. I'm sorry, which slide did you want? Did you want a different slide? I'm sorry, which slide? The slide showing the connection to the house to Main Line.
Okay.
They're back to...
Sorry, I'm going to have to flip through these quickly here. That one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here we show a gravity sewer, which is, the house appears to be like twenty feet away from the street. In this scenario, that works, but the majority of our houses are not twenty feet from the street. A lot of these tanks, septic fields are all back to the house, which makes that line a lot longer, and minimum grade, that's pushing that sewer a lot deeper into the ground, which is raising the cost of the overall installation of this sewer, main street. Michael goes to lower the cost. I spoke with a, I'm not sure his name, a water seep sewer, and we talked about this, and he agrees that the fields are mandated to be decommissioned, but the tanks are not. There's nothing wrong with the tanks, though they go, continue to service for another hundred years. It's the fields that are the problem. You walk down any street early morning, you can tell those fields are working in resistance. So with this setup, the tank is being removed for decommission, so a lot of people here are just going in, running the tanks, and I'm telling them that they got the tanks. With the low-pressure system, which is sort of, maybe the first open house was ready, there's a small quarter of the first open house, it's possible, there's an option to have a low-pressure system, which will be submitted to the residents and they'll pull it out. I haven't seen, I never heard an answer to that, I'm not sure where they drafted that option. But you can keep your existing tank, you can put it right there. A low-pressure line from the tank to the street does exactly the same thing as this lift station is doing from the low point of sewer pumping up the hill and dumping it into sewer system, there's no difference. So my question is, why are you going out to have a low-pressure system from the existing tank to the sewer? It's far less expensive, and you're saving a lot of energy right here, not getting rid of stuff out of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you for the question. I, I could speak from my own experience with low pressure system, and, and they are problematic, and they are problematic operationally, but maybe what I will do, from my experience, we will pass this over to Stan Tech again to help explain why they selected a gravity system as opposed to, or recommending a gravity system as opposed to a low pressure system. Fair question. If, if I may.
So, when this project was first conceived back in 2008-ish, they looked at, or we looked at, and the municipality looked at a couple of different options, one being a low pressure sewer and one being a gravity sewer system, but as the project has progressed over the years from, from the development of the trunk sewer and the development of the sewers in each one of these neighborhoods, gravity has been the preferred way to install and service these neighborhoods. So that's the direction that we have right now for this particular project.
Like I said, I spoke directly to the water service board, and they don't really understand why the tanks need to be moved. There's multiple pieces of, of our [inaudible] meter or so, and pumping it directly into the sewer. A lot of these houses have setbacks more than a couple hundred feet. This works, if it's, if it's a new subdivision, then all the houses are supposed to serve it, so it makes sense. 20 feet away, it makes sense, but that's not the case.
389 Hiawatha is 300 feet to their field.
So if, if, can you share with who you spoke with, Madle Water Service Board, maybe we could, we could circle back with them to get some, get some idea of what some of their comments and thoughts were?
The grant also eliminates the costs that you're showing for yearly removal from all our tanks. That cost disappears with the grant.
Right, so can you, can you share with who you spoke with at Madle Water Service? Could you share with who you spoke with at Madle Water Service Board? And then we could kind of circle back with them and, and try to get, get some of their thoughts around why, why they would favor a low pressure system?
Well, their mandate, their mandate is to cover the field, and I think they'll bring it up.
I'm sorry, I probably had spoken to somebody there. Yeah, yeah, are you able to share with who you spoke with there?
I can remember the name of those [inaudible].
If, well, if you'd like, if you cared to, if you cared to share his name via email with the, with the, oh, maybe, maybe you have there. Oh, yeah, if, if you, if you, if you care to share the name of your contact via email. I'm sorry?
So, can I just speak to that?
Okay, thank you.
So you're right, a low pressure sewer system is a viable way of servicing properties, but, but the standard that the municipality has set to this point is a gravity sewer system.
Yeah, but why is it set by the municipality? They're not the government in charge, there's water services.
No, the, the operation, the operation of the utility itself will be the municipality. The infrastructure will be turned over to the municipality.
But they're not afraid of the door? It's a little residence, they're putting the door.
Yeah, so, in a municipality, things are constructed to a certain standard, municipal standard.
You guys have a email, it concerns me, ask you the questions.
Okay, so, well, maybe, maybe what I could do, then maybe, maybe I'll, can I turn to Dave, or are you able to provide some perspective on the standards, the municipal standards that we currently employ here at the RM in terms of standard, gravity versus low pressure?
Yeah. Back originally when the RM was exploring the opportunity for servicing, the entire opportunity with wastewater sewer collection system, gravity versus low pressure sewer, there was an in-depth discussion with mayor and council of the day. We looked at the operating costs, we looked at serviceability, long-term, 10, 20-year lifecycle costs and that, and it was determined it would be in the best interest of the rate payers, residents of West St. Paul, for a gravity sewer system. It's less costly to operate, it's less costly per resident to operate because you're not paying for hydroelectric costs for operating the pumps. It's a low pressure sewer system, and on a low pressure sewer system, there's dynamics with that type of wastewater. Typically, on a low pressure sewer system, it's a plug-flow system, so the pump comes on for five minutes, pumps a slug of wastewater in there, it sits in that pipe, and as it sits in that pipe, it may take maybe a month, or whatever the timeline is, to get to the system that distributes the wastewater to the main gravity system. Well, what happens is, and it's been my experience doing design build of wastewater treatment plants in California and where else here in, in Canada, that the wastewater cooks. So it's standard domestic wastewater strength typically designed is for 250 BOD biochemical oxygen demand and 275 or 300 total suspended solids. What happens with a low pressure sewer system, those BOD strengths arise, and you have more hydrogen sulfane gases and methane gases, and that cooks in the pipe. Our city Winnipeg standard, we have a certain amount of wastewater strength that go to the city Winnipeg that's allowable strength. If we exceed those limits, the city Winnipeg will charge over strength charges for wastewater. So when we looked at that originally with the mayor and council of the day, and they were given all this information, at that time, they thought it was prudent with their engineers and with Manitoba Water Services Board to go to a gravity system, and that's why we did not go with low pressure sewer.
There, any, any additional questions?
How can you study any alternative that we provide when you already set the date for the public hearing?
I think, I think Mr. Rowan will explain this, is that there was consideration.
I don't care what Mr. Rowan said.
Well, that was the answer, sir.
Yeah, no, nobody's [inaudible].
Next question.
Hi, I'm Nick. Just want to first say thank you to the RM for the efforts you guys have done to reduce the cost. Everybody here appreciates that, obviously. So, like, I don't pretend to have anything that how our RM or some different funds that everybody knows about, and, you know, I don't pretend to argue anything, but obviously you mentioned how we can't have a community at large make for improved of a specific area, but we've also contributed to that fund for the community at large. I, I don't know what the percentage is for our 114 residents, if you, you know, take up the last five years of these new houses that have been developed, whatever percentage our 114 houses make up of the RM, I don't think it'd be unreasonable for our contribution to that fund during the past, however many of years, be applied to this on the RM. If that's the money we contributed, that can be used to [inaudible]. I'm just very, only, well, we have contributed, whatever that percentage is, I know that that might not be some crazy amount, like something 95%, like a 10% or something like that, but I think that's pretty reasonable to bear from the RM's perspective. Yeah, I think the response would be great, yeah.
Sure, is that, so the question is, is why can't?
Yeah, like, why wouldn't the RM just consider using part of that fund that we would have contributed to?
Yeah, that, that, that wouldn't be regular accounting practice. I'm, I could possibly call on Crystal to, Crystal, could, could I call on you to, to verify that? My, that would not be regular accounting practice to draw a proportion of a reserve fund that's for the community at large to, to finance an LI. That would not be regular financing practice, would be my understanding. Is, is that fair?
Yes, that is fair. Now, are you referring to your taxes that you pay annually?
Yeah, like, I'm just learning here, you know, people are throwing out the number of eight to 10 million dollars as in a reserve fund. We've obviously contributed to that reserve fund as well, right, through our taxes, through what you guys have collected as the RM, right? So we've paid in that money, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable that the RM would put some of this project for us.
So, your...
Well, maybe it's 20 million.
Your, your tax, your tax bill that you pay annually is, makes up your general operating fund, that is to cover all expenses that the RM foresees in a year. So that includes your garbage pickup, that includes your snow removal, includes the operations of administration, et cetera, et cetera. We do not budget to fund the reserves except for two. We have our general, general reserve, and we have our equipment replacement reserve. I don't know what percentage you guys actually do contribute, I'd have to look at the numbers over the years, which is an astronomical amount of work, but in saying that, honestly, it's probably maybe 1% or 2%, which is not much over the last five, 10 years.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I just thought, just for, you know, part of what you're contributing to me. Another thing I just thought, well, it was kind of mentioned here, a lot of people, you know, are retired, live in, on these streets, you know, are on pensions or fixed incomes. Obviously, the RM has reserve funds, you know, it looks like it's about using rough numbers, $3 million to the taxpayers. Has the RM considered acting as the bank and offering a reduced interest rate to people who are on fixed incomes? Or whatever it is, has the RM considered essentially acting as that lending party as opposed to relying on marketing 7.75, you know, percent?
As per recommendation from the Manitoba government, we are required to keep one year of operating within our reserves. That is currently roughly about just over $9 million, so that knocks you down to approximately $1 million if all capital projects are completed for 2023. The $3 million that you are specifically speaking of that is in the sewer reserve is for the main trunk line, which was funded by the entire municipality as a whole, as it services, I, I want to say at least 50% of the municipality. Now, when it comes time that we put in place another trunk line down McPhillips, again, that'll be another project funded as a whole. So that $3 million is to cover any maintenance repairs relating to that main trunk line that is running directly down Main Street that everybody's sewage flows through to the city of Winnipeg. So it's not available funds for a specific...
Mr. Galloway, Mr. Galloway, can you give Nick some, he's got a que, he's up there, like, I'm sorry, but you, just let him ask their questions and get their answers?
I appreciate that. And then the last thing I saw is, basically, at least I saw [inaudible] on the slide there, we're going to get to vote, and if, you know, two-thirds of us say no, you know, most of the council, but it seems like it can still go ahead and without our consent, at least I'm reading data as correct. Is the plan, so if two-thirds of the people vote no, based on [inaudible], it doesn't seem like two-thirds of the people are going to go yes, or, you know, two-thirds are going no, does the RM, is this going to be dead, or is [inaudible]?
With, with two-thirds voted, the public hearing, two-thirds, if two-thirds of the community oppose the, the project at the open house, two-thirds or more oppose at the open house, and then at that point, the project does not proceed, or another variation of the project does not proceed for two years, and for two-thirds. I believe, I believe I have that correct, is that correct, Ling?
Yes, so at the public hearing, if the municipality records opposition from the more than two-thirds, in this case, it would be from 75 of the 114 properties, the, the project would not be permitted to proceed, and there would be a requirement that no similar project could be proposed for at least two years. But I can say that if two-thirds or more of the community does not wish for the project to proceed, it's very unlikely that the municipality or any provincial agency would again grant money without the will of the community to move forward.
Yeah, that's fair enough, like, like I said, it's not a sewer at all, like, like the, the instructions that have happened, I think are substantial, and I very appreciate that everybody here, but it certainly doesn't seem like we supersize things like this.
Yeah, so, so for clarity, 75 property, individual properties need to close. Okay, I'm, I'm not arguing about that.
65 is less than 66%, but don't lie to us. I got a [inaudible].
So, let's, let's use the number two-thirds, okay? And I won't debate whether it's 75 or 76. So if, if, if more than, if more than two-thirds of the population of individual property owners object, then at that point, the, the project does not proceed. Ling presents a very important point, though, and, and I just want people to consider this, is that there's an opportunity now to proceed with improvements in your area at what is very close to a 60% discount. With, with the government max that have been pulled together, with the design that's ready to go with all the funding that's in place, so if a project now gets sidelined for a period of two years or more, I think Ling's absolutely correct that the likelihood of proceeding with the same support from all other government and elsewhere is probably going to vanish. And so, I think, I think people should be aware that, that the, the provincial regulations are in place, the rehabilitation or replacement of facilities is going to be provided, and so at some point, there will be a requirement to install sewer. So the question is, is do you want to do it when there's grants available and funding support available to offset close to 60%, perhaps even more depending on what cost comes in of the customer, price of the project today or not? And so, that's, I'm not, this is your decision, and how you end up proceeding with this is, or how you end up feeling with this, if you choose to uphold it, that's, that's your decision, and, and, but I just think that that's an important consideration for everybody. I don't think, I'm sorry, sir, I'm trying to hold five minutes per individual.
I'm wondering why an employee of the municipality is trying to sell us on this, the residents, the residents...
Please start again, I have a trouble here.
I'm trying to understand why an employee of the municipality is trying to sell us on this concept. You, we never voted you in. I'd like to know how each councillor, if they support this project, has submitted today, or do they not support the project?
Yeah.
We, we voted in the councillors and the mayor, and we have heard from them essentially.
And so, I mean...
No, it's not directed at you, I'm asking the councillors and mayor, do they support the project as it's submitted today?
Okay, I, I, I can turn, I can turn over the...
I'm not asking you.
Thank you, I'm the chair, sir.
Well, I'd like my elected official sentence.
Yes, I'll turn it over to the board.
I'm open.
I, I want to clarify my point, sir. I am not trying to sell you this project.
Yes, you are.
I am here to provide you with information.
This is a small, this is, this is a small municipality, I mean, this is a small municipality, like, this isn't, you know, there's not 2 million people in this area, this is a small, when I moved there in 96, the mayor, Reeve, came to my house, introduced himself, gave me his number, and I felt like I was in a very small, tight-knit community. Now I feel like I'm completely detached from the people running the municipality. I mean, it's a small municipality, and I find, we can't get straight answers to me. Like, I understand you're, like, I'm not coming after you, but we're asking the elected officials where they stand and why they can't help us with the funding, and all I get from you is standard accounting practices. I'm not disrespecting you at all, I'm not coming after you, but the RM can do whatever they want, they've got this massive expansion, I never voted for any of this, and all this money's coming in, and you, as a, as a hired employee, are telling us it's not acceptable accounting practice. it's not acceptable accounting practice. I mean, it's just, the elected officials need to answer these questions, Peter and the councillors in those areas.
And, and so, so to be clear, so to be clear, I am not trying to sell you anything, I'm trying to provide information, and, and...
You're, you're, you're telling us to...
And, and, I mean, it's a shared topic. And, and recommendation.
Okay, I want to hear from the elected officials very well.
For once, very well, but, but I want you to know that I'm providing a recommendation as well, which would be to proceed. I am not trying to sell you this project.
I'm not calling you out, if I was, you'd know it by heart. I want to hear from the elected officials, where they stand on this.
Dave, Dave, I'll, I'll, I, I have no problem answering, you know, it's, it's not a, I don't envy any of you residents who live in that area at all, right? It's, uh, it's not a good situation for you guys to be put in. Like I said, I wouldn't want to be put in that situation either. Uh, last, uh, last term, the residents on Rossmore and Addis were put in the exact same situation as you guys, right? They paid, you know, seventeen thousand and twenty-one thousand or seven, like, sus, whatever, let's call it seventeen thousand dollars a house, there was a hundred and eleven houses, I believe. You know, they, they wanted, uh, subsidies as well, they didn't get any subsidizing. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, it's, it's a hard situation to be put in, where, you know, it's a substantial amount of money to hook up the sewer, we, you know, we all understand that, you know, we, you know, there's a councillor who, who lives there as well, he's going to have to pay the same money as, as you, and like I said, it, it doesn't, this is the one thing that, I know it doesn't make sense, people don't like to hear the answer, but why can't we just take this money and use it for this, right? So there's a hundred and fourteen homes there that we can't just take that money from the other residents, that your, your guys' taxes this year didn't go up at all, and the, the expansion of the RM have paid for, you know, a new pumper, the fire, um, grader, loaders, stuff like that, that current residents haven't had to pay for, right? Can I speak, please? You've, you've been speaking the whole time, please let me speak.
You're definitely the boss, you're begging that.
What, okay.
So if folks would like to hear from the council, they will need to let the council speak. So if, if we could please, um, um, respect the request to hear from council, we would, um, we'd perhaps give them the opportunity to finish. Would, would any of the other councillors, they, they turn to have at this point?
Yeah, I, I want to, I've been doing this since two thousand and ten, and I've gone to every one of your doors. In this last term, when I ran, people were coming, meeting me at the door and saying, "You neglected me, you didn't, you didn't get our area sewer. Now we're bringing you sewer, and you're asking if I support this?" I do support this, because I've seen the costs go up from two thousand and ten to now, I've been pretty well affiliated in every LID that has gone on. We challenged this administration from when we saw each other last, at the last presentation, to look at different ways to get the cost down, the costs on everything, go to Sobeys, get a loaf of bread, look at the difference. They're working on getting the cost down as far as we can, and I'm not going to tell them, "Stop here at this number." We're going to keep working till the day that this project finalizes in a year, year and a half, whatever it may be, if it passes. But right now, everybody has said, "You've neglected me and sewer, our area needs sewer." We're talking low, the, the low pressure with the gra, the grinders and stuff, but then you've got to look at the other end, there's people's tanks that are failing. So again, now you're going to add more cost than putting a tank in with a grinder. So y, you can look at it so many different ways that there's always going to be more cost, this is the way a, a street has to be if not everyone has a new tank in their system. You can't have one house having a grinder system and a house, and the next house having low pressure, because it doesn't work, you can pump sewer into your own neighbor's house. So you're asking me if I support this, yes, I do, and I got asked for by a lot of the residents, and Gary, not everybody's here, because I have talked to everybody about it too. So this is needed, uh, we're, we're in one of the older areas of West St. Paul, I've lived here for forty-eight years, and I've seen the issues all around our area, so that's what I'm going to say.
I, I also support this, uh, project, because I see that costs are not going down, they're going to go up. If you're going to want a sewer system in your house, now's the time to get it, because it's going to be the lowest that it is. I know that people have said that, you know, we are fear mongering, but I don't see it as fear mongering, I think it's that we're trying to be transparent, putting all the facts out on the table, and just letting you know what some of the consequences are based on the decisions that you make. If you don't, you know, the decision is yours to make today or next, at the public hearing, and we're not going to force anybody for it, and we're going to abide by your decision, but you just got to know that, uh, I agree that, you know, that if this project goes no, then is really anyone want to try it again because they don't know where it's going to end, end up with? And if it does go through, it may not be two years, it might be three years, four years, and if you take a look at, uh, some other municipalities, they've been waiting a long time for, uh, this kind of money to come to their municipality, and they're waiting for that. So we're all on a waiting list, and we have to abide by the waiting list of what the government decides who's going to get what, and we got a good chance this year, and we need to take opportunity for that chance, because we don't know when it's going to come again next.
I, I don't have any skin in the game. I don't care what you do, you do what you want to do. You want to vote against it, vote against it, you want to vote for it, vote for it. That's, it's your decision. Based on, uh, I mean, I'll tell you, seven years ago, I put in a septic field, in a septic tank, thirty thousand dollars. So I had to pay that, I had to put it in. My taxes, I, somebody said here, "Well, I don't get anything for my taxes," I don't either. I don't, I don't get anything, all my services are well, septic, field. But my taxes, you want my taxes to go pay for your property, so I take issue with that too. When you say, "Oh, well, you know, all these taxes, why can't, why can't we pay for it?" Why should I pay for you? My money goes into the general operating fund, I pay a lot of money for taxes, so ask yourself that question, why should I, who have no services, pay for your services? That's a question you need to ask. Uh, you know, Violet, let me finish, you're always interrupting, stop interrupting so we can speak here. So the reserve fund, we could have used that reserve fund, you want us to reserve it for you. What about Rossmore and Addis? We could have used four point two million dollars on Rossmore and Addis, and there'd be nothing in the reserve. So we have to manage the money properly so that it's there in the future for any repairs, any maintenance, anything that might come up. We had to do some work in Rivercrest, it, it cost us a fortune. It comes out of funds, of, out of those funds, when something breaks, we have to pay for it. So that's one of the reasons that we can't just deplete a reserve fund. So for me, if you don't want the sewer, vote against it, if you want it, vote for it. That's, be all, that's, that's the bottom line, you choose, we've given you options, we've done the best we can, there's, there's, uh, certain grants we cannot stack on here, so people say, "Go get, go get more money." Well, we're applying for grants, but those grants also have certain limitations, where they tell us, "You cannot apply it to this, you cannot stack a fund." So we're trying to find, we're trying to find grants that we can stack with this, with this grant to lower your prices. And you know what? Somebody called our staff liars and, and all kinds of things, our staff has been doing nothing but working hard to try and find money to bring this down. So you know, I don't think it's fair to say to them, "You're liars," or that "We're liars." We're not liars, we're here to give you the options, you make the decision, that's, that's your option.
All you are is insane, and we're taking your money.
Exactly, and we're retired, we're supposed to get the money, we're retired people.
Then say no, Violet.
We will.
Good, that's your decision, that's democracy.
I think we still have people asking questions, I think we should go back to that.
Yeah. Hi, I'm sure a lot of people know Bruce Henry, former mayor. Oh, can you hear me? Yeah, hi, thanks, yeah, I'm Bruce Henry, former mayor, I am also in the, uh, Kennebec, Hyawatha, Minnehaha Catchment Area. Um, first of all, I just want to say that council, you know, you, you realized the mistake when you rolled the project out in June, you know, the height of graduation season, baseball, soccer, people were really wrapped up, and then you scheduled a public hearing in the height of, uh, vacation season. You took ownership and you postponed it, and, uh, you know, I know a lot of the residents were grateful that you pumped the brakes. I still think, you know, based on a lot of concerns you're hearing, you still have an opportunity to pump the brakes. Uh, there's a lot of concerns that are, uh, going to be taken here under consideration, and, uh, I just think that, you know, I'm going to raise a couple of points, and I think you should have po, you know, provided everybody noticed that you had a five minute rule, because I really think that that's proper communication. So I would hope from my knowledge and experience and thoughts and suggestions that you can look at, that we're going to throw away that five minute period, because I think I have some good suggestions here. So we're looking at, uh, two different scenarios, the people on, uh, Hyawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha have one price, the individuals on, uh, Baldock Nye, Evelyn have a second price. There's a lot of differences between those two streets, and even when you saw the numbers themselves, that is something that hadn't taken place previously with any of the public hearings that were held on the LIDs. The way the numbers were factored was based on frontage, et cetera. So when you look at the numbers, um, they were pretty consistent in different neighborhoods of the price to buy into it, so when you look at the, the neighborhood, the setbacks, the numbers, for example, uh, as Bruce, uh, pointed out, on Kennebec, with the setbacks on the property, there's some homes that are two hundred, three hundred feet close to the setbacks, so when you look at your, uh, figure that you've indicated in your numbers there, uh, ten to fifteen thousand dollars for setbacks, uh, for the work from the street to the homes that the homeowners are going to be required to do, um, that number is really not, uh, factual when you look at the differences in the setbacks compared to the areas of Rossmore and Addis that, uh, have had work or Matic. Most of those homes are maybe a fifty foot setback at most, so, well, there's a lot of them in this catchment area that we have here tonight, it's very different. So I really challenge that number, because it's going to be very different than what's up here. And again, I, I think these are just very good questions, and, you know, if everybody understands, and I say, "I have a very good understanding of this, uh, you know, I worked on this project right from the get-go, when I started on council in two thousand and two, and here we are, uh, twenty-one years later, almost twenty-two years later, still talking about it, working on it." Uh, I do support sewer, I've always supported sewer, I've sold it to the community, you know, in, in a manner that I felt we've communicated with the community, shared all the facts, and did a proper, uh, presentation, uh, and we backed off when we were aggressive. When, you know, the, the dates that you've shown here, coming forward on November second, with all due respect, those are aggressive dates, okay? Council does have the ability to pump the brakes, so we can get some more answers. Um, I want to say that, um, uh, you know, you're moving in the right direction, you've come back with another five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I want to congratulate you on that, because you're taking the numbers down, that's what we want to see. But are there other options? And from what I see here tonight, and my knowledge of the project, when I look at the Minnehaha, Hyawatha, Kennebec catchment area, I wonder why we're moving two different catchment areas, but yet if you go back to the, the map, if you go back to that map for a minute, please, Dave? The one that shows the, the catchment areas, that one right there. During our time on council, or my time on council, with other members of council, we are now missing the Grassmere area, it seems to have disappeared off. The Grassmere area was always included in the sewer project, so we're missing the homes, and there, I believe there's sixteen homes that are across the street from the municipal hall to the tracks. The areas of priority always identified were from the tracks to the river, that was always considered the area. So we have sixteen homes on Grassmere that are in a no man's land right now, so I'd like to know why that area seems to have missed from the, the map. Because when I look at that, you know, and I'm not an engineer, and I have a lot of respect for engineers, and, uh, you know, the professional staff, that is there a reason that got overlooked? Maybe there's an opportunity here that you revisit the plan, and you look at, for example, maybe creating a separate LID for the Minnehaha, Hyawatha, uh, LID area, and then you have the one for the Evelyn, Grassmere, Kennebec, or, uh, Baldock Nye. Um, one of them requires a, a lift station, one of them doesn't. So for example, if I was thinking out loud, and if I was, you know, on council today, these would be the questions that I would be asking. I would be saying to council, or the engineering staff, and Water Services Board, and Stan Tech folks, I would be saying, um, "Why don't we take the funding and apply it that we have, we take the Minnehaha, Hyawatha, Kennebec out of the picture, or vice versa, we take the other one out of the picture, and we apply the funding to that catchment area?" Because to my knowledge, I don't believe Water Services Board, and I see we have Travis here, that there's like a per capita funding that goes toward it. When you look at this number, I don't care who you are, if you're wealthy, not wealthy, uh, it's a huge number to swallow. Uh, so I think that when you, you know, and Water Services Board, I'm sure can respect that. I would, you know, doubt that there's very many communities that have seen a number that's being proposed, even though we're going in the right direction down, it's still a significant number that we have to deal with. So when I look at that, I think, is there the opportunity to, let's say, for example, you pull the Kennebec, Hyawatha out of the picture, that area, I think you had sixteen homes was what was in that area, so if you take the sixteen properties that are on, um, Hyawatha, or on Grassmere, that would leave you a remainder of forty-four homes that you were applying funding to. That would turn, if you pulled that one out and applied at a later date for the Kennebec, Minnehaha, Hyawatha area, and a separate LID for funding, you would have the funds from forty-four homes that you were going to apply in that area, and then that would also give the potential to reduce the amount to the people on Baldock Nye, Evelyn, and Grassmere based on those numbers. I think that's, uh, you know, uh, uh, something that should be looked at, I, I think there's a lot of value in that. So I'm going to just make a couple of points, but a, a, again, it's, you know, what concerns me the most is that, you know, without doing the proper due diligence, and when I see something like that, it really jumps out at me that, you know, that aggressive date on November second or third is aggressive. I don't know, Travis, if there's some compelling reason that, uh, you know, a decision has to be made boom, boom, boom now, uh, especially when, you know, we're asking good questions that I believe deserve good answers. And again, I want to clearly state, I do support sewer, I always have supported sewer. So having said that, there's another couple of things that I want to point out too. Um, in two thousand and six, when the province, uh, had the onsite wastewater management inspection team go out, they visited the homes on Rossmore, Addis, uh, Maddock, Drury, Hyawatha, Baldock Nye, Minnehaha, Kennebec. If there was a situation, then they issued an improvement order. In some cases, there were homes that were immediately told you had seven days to decommission and repair. Uh, they went through the neighborhood, I know my house, I had to put in a tank, I know my neighbors did, a number of people on my street did, and, you know, when I hear, uh, you know, Gary here, to make statements like, you know, which are totally, you know, not true, that, about people dumping on Minnehaha, that's a statement that you don't have facts on, because if they were dumping direct in there, onsite wastewater management would have done something about that. So I, excuse me, I'm talking, okay? The point I'm trying to make here is that we're trying to solve a problem here, okay? We need to be working together, and we need to fix this, okay? We want to get it down to an appropriate number, but making vague, inappropriate statements is not helping the situation and pitting neighbors against neighbor, okay? So we're just trying to figure this out, so I'm going to ask you to hold your comments. If you want to talk to me later, we can do it, but if there was a problem on Minnehaha, trust me, onsite wastewater management would have addressed it. They haven't addressed it, and to myself, I'm not aware of any compelling reason why this can't be extended. Look at different options, like I say, potentially two areas that we could look at of creating, uh, uh, different LIDs, looking at adding that Grassmere little catchment area, the municipal hall has sewer, the fire hall has sewer, the curling club has sewer, so why wouldn't we want to extend to the rest of those people in that immediate area? And I, in fact, I'm not sure, you know, maybe Dave can tell us, does the ambulance station have sewer also, Dave? Would they have tied in off of Main Street? Yeah, so we have Main Street. So we've already got a, a lot of the properties on Grassmere. So we've already got a lot of the properties on Grassmere and Main that have sewer. Why aren't we really looking at finishing connecting that? Especially when we're rolling out, you know, a much bigger number that's really having a hard time for people to stomach. So, I want to just make a couple of, you know, observations and comments. So again, you know, there is no compelling reason, you know, if Water Services Board says you don't make a decision by, you know, November 15th, you're going to lose the money. Well, I know that during my time, the ask to Manitoba Water Services Board on an annual basis was about $500 to $600 million from every community. Their budget was $18 million. So, everybody in the, you know, Manitoba had a project that they were looking for money. So when you get in there, absolutely, you want to try to take advantage of it, but if it doesn't make sense, or it's going to create, you know, a lot of difficulties for residents, and, you know, sometimes you just got to say no, or pump the brakes, and figure out is there a better way, or some way we can make sure we do get that money? Let's change the parameters of the area we're looking at, and see if there are other options. The other option that I was thinking about is that the land behind Hiawatha will be developed. We know that the developer that owns that bought that land, or sold it, bought it, and to my knowledge, Manitoba Métis is the ones who own it now. When I talked to Dave Chartrand in spring, he told me they have a plan for housing in that area. Having said that, you know, if there is going to be a lift station, and you created a second LID, maybe there's the potential that the developer, as part of their development agreement, can pay for the lift station that would allow the people on Hiawatha, Minnehaha, and Kennebeak to tie into. That way, it's just coming straight from the developer, it's not coming out of the general reserves or anything, it's just they're told to size that development to include the lifting capacity to service that area. It's something, and again, I'm just trying to be creative and think of some ideas that, you know, might, you know, be helpful. So, so, the importance is affordability. I can tell you on my street, there's 14 houses. 11 of those folks are retired, that live in these houses. They're between 65 and almost 90 years old. So, we don't want to drive them out of the neighborhood, you know, because of the cost. People at that age are not interested in taking a mortgage, or, you know, they're planning, you know, for the twilight of their life. So, we just don't want to create a situation where, you know, because we're trying to grab a block of money, that we're going to lose lifelong residents that, you know, have contributed to the community and, you know, are moving only for one reason, because they, all of a sudden, they can't afford it. That just is, you know, a non-starter, whatever you like to say. The financial reality is prohibitive to a lot of people, and again, they're not alone in that dilemma. You know, increasing home values, you know, it's a common notion that you say when you're doing this, and I think Doug pointed out, too. Sure, you know, values go up, but the municipality is getting taxes, so they're winning, but ultimately, you know, it is a burden for that person that is actually having to pay the bills. And again, when you start doubling that with the interest rates the way they are, it is a, you know, a growing concern. And I can say that during my time on council, I made it clear, you know, that if the project becomes unaffordable, because when we looked at this area, we didn't even know at the time how we were going to do it. We talked in vague terms, and that's going back 10 years ago. We didn't know, you know, as, you know, Dave talked about, the general consensus was, we wanted to have a low-pressure, or not a low-pressure system, gravity system, it's a better system, it's better value for the money, it's less problematic. That was our end goal to have it. And today, I still feel the same way, that it is a better system to have. But it, we want to have that, but we want to have that at an affordable rate, so that, you know, we make sure it's affordable. We don't want to send the wrong message, because if council sends this, and ultimately, you know, you're right, it is the residents' decision, but to get it to that November 2nd public hearing, it's your decision to send it there. If the council sends it there, it automatically triggers the hearings going to happen. If it gets voted two-thirds, and it ends up at the municipal board, it's out of all of our hands. Because the municipal board is going to say, "Nope, didn't pass, it's done." It really sends the wrong message to our funding agencies like Manitoba Water Services Board. Because I've heard it from everybody here tonight, they're all supporting it, it's just the cost. So, you know, talking about support versus not wanting are two very different things. And if we send it prematurely, without looking at other options that we have, and it goes to Water Services Board, the word around town is going to be, you know, "Forget West St. Paul, they shot it down, too bad, so sad, see you later." And really, that's not the message that we really have here. I know that, you know, over the years, in speaking to people about the sewer, that number that we even presented back 10 years ago was about the $19,000 range, and then there was the cost, that we were very clear that, you know, was going up front. And, I mean, you know, I had probably one of the most expensive properties for the frontage, because my home is set back, you know, close, you know, off the back of the property, probably 160 feet from the front line, or greater, so it's a huge amount. So, what I just want to, you know, say to council is, is it's important that you, you know, hear what's said tonight, that November 2nd date is just a little too aggressive. If there's no compelling reason from Water Services Board that the money is going to be lost, then if those options that I've talked about tonight are explored, maybe comes back. But even at the end of the day, maybe that money, at this point, is better off being spent in another community or somewhere else, if it's going to force people from our neighborhoods, if it's going to create, you know, a financial burden that is untenable for a lot of the residents. It's just something that, I know if I was on council, you know, my wisdom to council would be is, let's, you know, pump the brakes, let's figure this out, let's look at all our options, you know, have we explored the two scenario? Can we look at making a developer pay for a different lift site? So, I just want to make sure that we aren't pitting neighbors against neighbors, you know, members of our community, everybody that lives here, Giorgio's in this, too, he knows he's right in this, in this area. You know, I've been on that side, today I'm on this side, but it's going to take us all to work together. I have nothing but respect for those folks over there, I've worked with them, they're professional, and every job that we were involved with, during my time with mayor and with our council, every one of those jobs came in under budget and on time. And again, it was well-received in the community, and I had people that were adamant, when we originally presented this in this gym, saying, "Never, never." And once they were, had we're connected and got the final bill, they were very pleased. I can tell you that, you know, but it took a lot of time. And, you know, from the time we've seen this, from June to the end of July, to having this tonight, which is great, but I really think we just need to pump the brakes and take it. So, I don't need to hear your questions, I just, you know, answers, because I really think that council, I've made it perfectly clear, black and white, what I think you need to do in your deliberations and think about this. And I'm willing to make myself available, you know, to council, and sit down with the StanTech, if you have questions, and, you know, talk about options that may be available or things. Like I say, I spent a lot of time on this project over the years. So I'll leave it at that.
Bruce?
Thank you.
Hold on. Bruce, Bruce, I just, I would like to ask you a couple of questions from being on council with you before, that I would like you to answer for your neighbors. So, do you think, if this project gets two-thirds against right now, do you think Water Services Board will be running back here to give us grant money again?
Government operates differently.
Okay? The reason, the reason I ask you this is because I was on council with you before, and you preached this to all of us numerous times, "If we don't take this money, it's gone." So that was, you drilled that into everybody's head constantly.
I think, Peter, with all due respect, the amounts that we were looking at, I had people in Rivercrest, okay, who paid $777, and they thought they were paying too much, okay? People in River Springs paid $6,600. People in Riverdale paid $7,200. There, the numbers are a completely different animal, and then when we had that money for the lift stations that existed, we really did have got to our head, because Manitoba Water Services Board of Conservation, we're not going to allow those lift stations that were at the end of their life to be rebuilt. So, we really did have to take it, because if not, then we're looking at everybody in those areas to take, take, or would have to go to a holding tank. So, it was a non-starter.
Okay, next.
But I just want to say one more thing. We have a new government in place, okay? As of yesterday, different governments have different spending habits, and, you know, that's something you have to be aware of. When we're talking about the environment, just recently, you know, they have been funding a lot of money, and Dave, I know you've got a long history at the city of Winnipeg, you know, that, that project here, at Main Street, somebody's talking about, you know, that they're spilling. But yeah, they're spilling, but at the same time, they are increasing the funding by $500 million every time they're back at it. So, it's not unheard of. It's a tough go, but that's Travis and his folks at Water Services Board, but it also takes a strong lobby from council, takes strong leadership, it takes you to be engaged, it takes you to be networking with the people in the province. That means the MLAs, that means the MPs, that means the Water Services Board. That was something that, you know, during my time as mayor, I spent a lot of time, you know, working with those folks and reaching out to them, to make sure they understood.
Okay, my next, my next question, just quickly. Typically, you've seen these projects funded at what, 33%, not 50, right?
It all depended, because they had different levels for it. When I was on council, we didn't have any of these standard, other than Drury. Drury was the only street of the old, the rest of them were already existing flats that were in place.
Yeah.
Existing LIDs that had money.
Yeah, existing infrastructure, sewer pipes. And then, and then just one, one more question. In your opinion, do you, you know, with what you've known happened before, do you, do you feel if this doesn't go through right now, at some point, the government conservation will come and force it on this area?
Well, I would say right now, again, there is no compelling reason. If you wanted to have conservation onsite wastewater management, go and do an inspection, and if there was one or two or three, but right now, I know of no non-compliant systems in this area. I'm not aware of any. And one of the interesting things is, I know that when conservation is going out, is I have people phone me, "The conservation will go out, the neighbor says my yard, my neighbor's field is leaking." Conservation goes to the house that's leaking, they go to the house across the street, the house to the left, the house to the, all sides, so it's not like one person gets picked on, and they, they do a thorough check. So, if there is a situation, and again, I know, that's why Rosmore, Rosmore, up until like a year and a half ago, still had, on a daily basis, sewage running in the ditches. That doesn't occur on Baldock, that doesn't occur on Nye, that doesn't occur on Minnehaha, and it doesn't occur on Hiawatha. So, I believe we, you know, we're, we're talking a different animal here, we're talking two different numbers because of the differences. You know, it was unfortunate, you spoke about the Rosmore situation, the people on the Rosmore, at the front end, from Main Street to the tracks, got one rate. Later on, you know, money came through, but the people on the other side of the tracks got a different rate, and those people on the other side of the tracks were not happy, and you know that, and I know that, you know, loud and clear. And, and again, I get their concern, because how did they, they, they did the heavy lifting to get the pipe there, and the people on the other side got, you know, at almost half the price? It's, it's not an easy decision, but I just think that these folks elected you, we got to take the time, you know, pump the brakes, investigate a couple of options, I've given you two options there that I think are reasonable. I know Bruce gave an option also there about that, you know, it was explained there by Mr. Ransome, and, you know, it, it's an answer, and at the end of the day, does it make sense to move it if it's $1,000 difference? I don't know, but I think if we looked at the new development that comes in there, and this one gets postponed for a while, and the lift station ends up in that new development, and they end up paying for it, then that's, that's a big savings, and it just shows the residents that, you know, we're encouraging or requiring new development to assist with some of our infrastructure for the people here. So I'll leave it at that, but I think, it's Bruce for Paul.
Mr. Henley.
Thank you for your comments, please.
Mr. Henley.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Henley, could I ask you a question?
I'm sorry, sir. The school had their own treatment plant, and the school had an overflow, okay? The province certified the treatment plant, and this was the biggest problem in the community, there was a whole bunch of misinformation. The school had their own treatment plant, and when you have a treatment plant, you have overflow, okay? So when the overflow went, it wasn't sewage going into the river, it was the actual overflow that was designed to happen in the school. The province, that was for the overflow, that, they had their own treatment, and they decommissioned their treatment plant, and they tied in the main street. So, I, again, all I know is if there was an issue, Manitoba Conservation, when they did their onsite wastewater inspection, and they went door to door, they did. We've got some people on Minnehaha that have their own central treatment lines.
Can we get, excuse me, excuse me, can we get back to this? This part, there's people waiting to ask questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr.
I, I wanted to ask Mr. Henley a question.
Please go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Henley, I want you to clear something up. A comment was made that we're paying for the new developer sewer and water.
No.
That is not true. My understanding is the developers pay for their own sewer and water, and that is then applied to when you purchase a lot or a house.
They pay for their own sewer and water within the area, the developed area, but as part of the, the fees that they pay to the municipality, they pay into the different reserves, and one of the reserves they pay into is the sewer reserve, and as Crystal pointed out, that's the reserve, so that when the main trunk line that runs through the whole community is extended or requires maintenance, that money's for that. That's the way it was always designed, that's the way it was always explained.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
A point of clarification, Dave. Excuse me, excuse me, I'd just like to have, to Mr. Henley, I want to have a point of clarification. He raised the issue with respect to, was the ambulance emergency building on Grassmere connected to the sewer? It has a holding tank presently, there is sewer there for a sewer stub to connect to the building, but they have not connected yet. I just want to have that as a point of clarification.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you, next question, please.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Adams, and I just have one very quick question on the Baldock, Nye, if we cannot be here at the public hearing on November 2nd, how do we vote?
Maybe, please.
Thanks, so I can clarify, so for, for residents in the local, to propose local improvement, you can register your support or opposition to the plan, the vote happens from the council table, okay? So if you want to register your, your support or opposition, you can do that with our office, we'll have an email and contact in the public hearing notice, that you can contact us, send an email, and we'll register you, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to thank everybody for, for participating tonight. I know that, you know, there's different views on this project, there's different views on, on how to proceed, but I think the best way to come to the best decision is always through dialogue and, and education. So I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and participating, and taking time out of their, their lives, their busy lives, and I wish you a good evening. Thank you.